If you don't mind, can you find it quick?
That'd be great. I ain't got a quorum. Ah, one, two, three, four, five, six. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Government Center. I'm sorry we're a minute or too late getting started, but we have a quorum here with us now. And I would like to call this meeting, the regular meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to Order. As is our usual custom, we will start our program tonight with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand as you are able? Reverend Tim Bagwell from Centenary United Methodist Church is going to give us our invocation, and we have two of our GCAP students who will step up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, thank you, stand, and for the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. God, Yahweh, Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead Macon and Bibb County. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but rather, "How do we learn? How might we need to change? To whom do we listen?" Remind them that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Forgive our finger-pointing and mistrust of each other. Save us from cacophony and discord and noise. Remind these good leaders that no matter where we live, everyone, gay and straight, transgender, black and white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh, atheist, everyone is our neighbor, and that there are no exceptions. Remind them that they are created in your image, therefore as leaders, they are called on to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, and spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant to these, good men and women, who are leaders. Grant to them and to all of us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out, and may we and they know when it is time to listen patiently and receptively. May they always be guided by the Spirit of community, and by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray, O God, Yahweh. Thy kingdom come, Thy will be done on earth in general, but in Macon, Georgia specifically, as it is in heaven. Amen.
Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, B.C. Tim, thank you so much for that wonderful invocation. I appreciate that. As I said before, Reverend Bagwell is pastor at Centenary United Methodist Church. Blessed to share his life with his wife Susan and their son John and daughter Emily. Thank you so much for being here, and it's always a pleasure for me to visit at Centenary. You're doing a great, great job over there. Thank you. Our, Janice has reminded me, that's her church. So she's gonna take credit for getting him here. That's wonderful. Our pledge of allegiance tonight was led by two of our GCAP students. GCAPs, remember, is the Georgia Civic Awareness Program for students. And this is a group of about thirty students from all of the high schools throughout Bibb County that come together to learn more about government and how government operates. Tonight, we had Reese Ellis. Reese, would you please stand so we can recognize you again? Reese is a junior at Stratford Academy, where she has been acknowledged by way of faculty recognition each of her high school years. Additionally, Reese is active in the Georgia Secretary of State Student Ambassador's Program at Stratford. She has participated in last year's GMA Mayor's Moldecade and was a youth delegate to the GMA Mayor's Day Conference this past January. She believes, quote, "Government is important so that people understand their privileges and the privileges that other people don't have." As well, it's imperative that we understand how government works and functions so we know how important our part is. Also, Mandy Wong. Mandy, would you stand, Thorst? Mandy is a junior at First Presbyterian Day School, where she is a member of the Junior Beta Club and volunteers with several community service organizations in Macon. She represented us at the Georgia National State Fair last year in the Peanut Pole and was a volunteer at the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Bring One for the Chipper Christmas Tree Recycling Event. Mandy believes that, quote, "Civic education is important for today's youth because we need to know our obligations and privileges since we are citizens," unquote. So, would you help me thank Reese and Mandy for being here with us, for participating in the GCAP program? Are there other members of this year's GCAP class with us here tonight? If so, I wanted to be sure and recognize you, but thank you so much for being here, all of you. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. The minutes of our pre-commission meeting of February twentieth and our regular commission meeting of February the twentieth, I am assuming, were prepared and distributed. Kinda got a motion from Commissioner Schlesinger, a second from Commissioner Shepard to approve the minutes as distributed. All in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Next, we have several invited guests. All of you are welcome, of course, and we are delighted and happy that each and every one of you are here. But tonight, we have a couple of students that have participated in the Martin Luther King Junior Oratorical Competition. And I'm gonna call on Charles Coney at this time to recognize those students at this point. Thank you very much, Charles.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Thank you for this opportunity to do something that we are very excited about. Macon happens to be one of the very few cities that celebrates the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday throughout the entire year. It's a concerted effort coming from the Martin Luther King Commission, a legislative body chaired by Commissioner Elaine Lucas, to make sure that it's not a theme that is restricted to February or to January, but to all the months of the year. The Commission partnered with the Recreation Department to do what has been our second year of the Martin Luther King Junior Oratorical Contest. We were so pleased with the results of that. I will also say that in the press release that was sent internationally, we got responses back from Germany because they were shocked with some of the excerpts coming from these students. Commissioner Lucas was present when we had the competitive event, and she thought it not robbery to ask these students to come before you tonight. So, I will introduce to you the second-place winner. His name is Kalen Collier. He is a junior at Rutland High School, and he will be followed by our first-place winner. Will you come forward, Kalen?
Good morning. My name is Kalen Collier. And my speech today will be addressing how we, as a society, can protect individual freedom and self-determination, and how I, as an individual, have advanced and advocated for those values. On July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, the Declaration of Independence was ratified, signaling the birth of a new nation, a nation discarding its dependence on its mother country and forming values that would make the United States the world leader economically, politically, and some would even argue, ideology. The foundation our founding fathers laid out for our nation were revolutionary during their time, with their ideas affecting every aspect of our history and present. Because of the foundation our founding fathers laid out, achievements such as the legalization of gay marriage, the addition of the Thirteenth Amendment, and sending a man to the moon were possible. Their ideas were fiercely debated and pondered upon before making their way into our Constitution, and it's within our Constitution where the true meaning of freedom lies. I believe the continued protection and representation of the U.S. Constitution is the best way to protect individual freedom and self-determination. As we live in a nation where our founding fathers established ideas like the freedom of speech, religion, and press, all of these ideas, rights, and reforms lie within the most powerful legal document on the planet, the U.S. Constitution. Because the Constitution is the centralized and summarized ideals of the American people, the document that we have abided by since the American Revolution. And while the Constitution is not perfect, it's been continuously shaped by the hands and minds of millions of Americans for the benefit of contemporary and future generations. The abiding by and offending the Constitution is the most effective way to stop people from infringing on our self-determination and individual freedom while upholding American values. Throughout these rights and values, I have strived to be the most productive student I could possibly be by joining clubs and programs that will prepare me for the psychological and economical world of living as an independent member of society. Programs such as FBLA and DECA, which are currently teaching me business skills such as budgeting, marketing, and entrepreneurship, or the GCAP program, which has given me memorable opportunities like this one, experiences that I can share with my friends and family. By gathering and spreading the knowledge I've gained from these clubs and programs, I can influence people positively, influencing my community for the better. All things considered, the U.S. Constitution is what separates the United States from any nation on this planet. Former President Barack Obama said, "We, the people, tell the government what to do; it doesn't tell us," an idea that America's most inspirational leaders have used in protest and support of the Constitution, like in Martin Luther King's mention of the Constitution in his "I Have a Dream" speech. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed, that all men are created equal, because it's equality which brings us all together as people, and it's equality what this nation is founded upon. Thank you.
Moving words coming from young minds. Will you now welcome our first-place winner, Ms. Etna Rutland. She is a junior at Central High School. Etna.
Hey, y'all. My name is Etna Rutland, and the title of my speech is "My Right, My Role, Our Liberty." Since I was a little girl, I grew up hearing about Martin Luther King Junior. My family and I have visited his birthplace in Atlanta, Georgia, historic places where he preached in Memphis, Birmingham, and Montgomery, even the church where he gave his first speech in Dublin, Georgia. Yes, I think I can honestly say I grew up learning about his dream that I am sure we are all familiar with. But as I've gotten older and more aware of my right, my role, and our liberty as an American citizen, I began to study and learn more about Dr. King. Martin Luther King was famous for a number of things, most of all his dreams of equality and togetherness with people. From my research about his life, I learned that he was more than just a dream. He aspired to change more about the lives of all Americans, black Americans in particular, through economic empowerment. But as he planned for the Poor People's March on Washington, D.C., his life was cut short. Although he is considered an advocate for integration, Dr. King himself said in conversation with friend, actor, and advocate, Harry Belafonte, "I've come upon something that disturbs me deeply. We have fought hard and long for integration, as I believe we should have, and I know we will win, but I have come to believe that we are integrating into a burning house. I am afraid that America has lost the moral vision she may have had, and I am afraid that even as we integrate, we are walking into a place that does not understand. I fear I am integrating my people into a burning house." Was Martin Luther King right? Are we in a burning house? Is the roof on fire? Look around us. What is going on in our community, our nation, our world? There are a lot of fires burning, and regardless of what your answer may be to those questions, what is more clear is it is our job, no, our duty, to not just be drum majors, but a firefighter for justice by putting those fires out. How do we do that? By staying informed and making our own choices about who we are and what we believe in. How do I do that? By rebelling. The fact that I am a hair-free black girl is an act of rebellion. My very existence makes a statement. I have had the honor to participate in the Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students, or GCAPs. I am learning about networking, the importance of government, and my civic duty. This is a rebellion. I have also been selected to present my paper, "Fear in the Black Community," at Harvard University's Graduate School last weekend. In addition, I volunteer in my community by reading to younger kids and serving food to less fortunate members of my community. All of that is a rebellion. I refuse to place my liberty in the hands of a system designed for me to fail. Therefore, despite all of the advances that have been made since the time of Dr. King, the question we must ask ourselves today, especially today, is has this dream turned into a nightmare? Therein lies the challenge for us, especially as young people. If we are to realize any rights, any roles, any liberties, his dream should not become our nightmare. Thank you.
So now you understand just a glimpse of the talent that we have right here in Macon in our community. So, thank you, Commission. Thank you, Martin Luther King Commission. Thank you, the Recreation Department, and thank you, community.
Well, thank you, Charles Coney. We appreciate your work as Assistant County Manager, and especially your work with the GCAP program. You have been a tireless warrior for the GCAP program, not just in the fundraising part for it, but in organizing the activities and accompanying the youth on different trips. So, thank you and congratulations to you for a job well done. And it really is refreshing, isn't it? In this day and age, when you hear so much about youth violence, and this is wrong, and that's wrong with youth, and they don't appreciate this, and they don't do that, and so on and so forth, to see examples of bright, young minds and people that are energetic and enthusiastic about learning about our system of government and improving it. So I say, thank you too. We appreciate your being here and appreciate all that you're doing. Congratulations to you on being selected as winners in this year's Martin Luther King Oratorical Contest. Next invited guest, I hope we have somebody here from the Macon-Bibb County United Way that are going to kinda give a... Dr. Bumpus, old good, our representative that led our campaign. Lead on, Dr. Bumpus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the Commission, ladies and gentlemen, the Office of Small Business Affairs was asked to lead the Macon-Bibb County Consolidated Governments United Way Campaign this year. It was an honor for us to have been asked and for us to have the opportunity to lead in our community in this way. I'd first like to express my profoundest thanks to Mrs. Hillary Watkins, who is the Administrative Assistant to the Office of Small Business Affairs, for her untiring work. She handled most of the administrative part of our campaign for us, Mr. Mayor and Commission. I wanted to just commend her for her work publicly.
Congratulations. Thank you. We have two representatives from United Way with us this evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Lisa Varian and Ms. Cleero Wright. And I'm gonna ask that they will stand and ask that, Mr. Mayor, you will join us here as we present to United Way a representative check of the generosity of Macon-Bibb County employees, of our administration, and as well as our commissioners and friends of Macon-Bibb County. It is my high privilege, honor, and pleasure to share with you that contributions from our Macon-Bibb County Consolidated Government exceed fifty thousand ten dollars. Finally, at a previous meeting, by the way, Commissioner Schlesinger, I've got your light on. Did you have a comment or something? Okay. Okay. At a previous meeting, we, the Commission declared March, the month of March, as Women's History Month, and in that regard, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the interim county attorney, Crystal Jones, to read the resolution in its entirety.
Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation, the state of Georgia, and Macon-Bibb County in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the nation, the state of Georgia, and Macon-Bibb County by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation, state of Georgia, and Macon-Bibb County by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas, American women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions for our nation, state of Georgia, and Macon-Bibb County. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the early forefront of every major progressive change movement, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and in other movements, especially the peace movement, where created a more just, which created a more just and fair society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American, Georgia, and local history. And whereas, not only during the month of March two thousand eighteen, but throughout the remainder of the year, it is important that we acknowledge and value the contributions American women have made and continue to make in the nation and our local communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Macon-Bibb County Commission, and is hereby so resolved by the authority that is the same, that the Macon-Bibb County Commission recognizes the month of March two thousand eighteen as Women's History Month, and urges that the citizens of Macon-Bibb County be mindful of the contributions of American women throughout the year.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lucas, additional comments from you, please, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. It's been my honor and privilege to serve as the lone female on this body, and I do say it's a privilege. And it's my honor to have introduced this resolution, and we want to thank the legal department for getting it together each March. At this time, I'd like to ask the ladies who are here if you'll join the mayor at the podium for his official proclamation of Women's History Month. So, ladies and the men who support the ladies, let's meet right down here. Mayor, would you join us?
Why? I need to make sure things stay legally compliant.
All right. You have heard the resolution read in its entirety, to declare March as Women's History Month in Macon-Bibb County. To the commissioners, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and I hereby declare the month of March to be Women's History Month in Macon-Bibb County, Georgia. And I call on each and every one of us to recognize the accomplishments, the achievements, and the effort of all of the women in our lives and all that they have done in the history of this great nation to bring us to the point we are today.
Thank you.
So resolved. Next item on our agenda, public comments on agenda items. This is the time for people to talk to us about an item that is on the agenda for action tonight, so that we hear from you before we vote. Those of you who signed up to talk about non-agenda items will be recognized later in the program. The first person to sign, Lindsey Holliday, wants to talk to us about the items M, N, and Q, which are settlements that we have reached. Dr. Holliday, thank you. You're recognized for five minutes.
Mayor and council members, I'm not sure which committee needs to deal with this, whether finance, operations, economic, community, public safety, engineering. It deals with all of them. You know, there are, we're always going to be, our community government is always going to be liable for our errors. There are accidental errors, and then there are willful errors. Accidental errors, you're going to get, somebody is going to, you're going to have to give some money. But if you make willful errors, that's when the jury really pulls the money out of our coffers. What kind of willful... So I'm asking y'all to pick up this issue. 2001, June 11th, the first and only public meeting about Forest Hill Road. The citizens begged you, and the city council never agreed to pursue the unsafe design of Forest Hill Road. G-Dot tricked the former mayor into signing, council never agreed to it. The deal is this, G-Dot finishes that project, they give it to y'all. You're responsible. This unsafe road, I documented. You can Google YouTube video I put up last week. I was going down Forest Hill Road, a little above the speed limit. Person passes me on the left in that, that, that suicide lane. We begged you, we told you, there's going to be a suicide lane there. Don't do it. And again, the city never agreed to it. It was the former mayor, and, Mr. Mayor, you remember, because you said, you talked to, I saw your communication with G-Dot. You said, "This is not quite proper, but y'all really want to push this through," and the former mayor signed off on it. I'm asking y'all to get your legal department to tell G-Dot, "You will not accept the responsibility for that project." Because then you'll be liable. And there's so much documentation where the citizen said, "This is going to be a dangerous road." There's so much documentation that it will be perceived by a jury as a willful error on y'all's part if you accept the responsibility. So I'm saying, there's, it's going to come a time when G-Dot's going to give you, "We're through with the project, per our agreement. It's your road now." I'm telling y'all, don't accept that road unless your legal department clears you of liability. Because that thing, I've seen our sheriffs parked in that middle lane, handing out tickets, and people running the red light. We told you there's going to be, people are going to run the red light at Lot Shoppy. We told you the intersection, how to build it, where you would not have anybody run a red light. But G-Dot pushed it down your throat. They pushed it down the citizen's throat. The citizens never agreed to that project. The city council never agreed to that project. The former mayor signed off on it, and G-Dot took that suspect document, built what they wanted, and now they want you to be responsible for it. It's critical that y'all do not accept that, because you will then be willfully responsible for an unsafe design. Settlements, let's make it be G-Dot paying that settlement, because it's coming. Serious injuries are going to come on that road. It will be in court, because there's so much documentation that the citizen said that was unsafe design. There will be a case, and if it's a willful negligence, that's when the money really comes running. Watch out for my city. Watch out for my county. I'm depending on y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. Appreciate your comments. And that was the only public comment on agenda items, so we'll move on then to reports from our standing committees. The first report is from Operations and Finance, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Watkins. Vice Chairman Watkins.
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on February 27, 2018, and took the following actions. The committee approved an agreement with Zaven Enterprises for four hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for repairs to minor streets throughout Macon-Bibb County. The committee accepted the following grants: a bike rack and repair station from Bike Walk Macon received from the Knight Foundation; the Clayton and Carol Paul Fund Grant; see, the spay and neuter services grant for the animal welfare in the amount of fifteen thousand. The committee approved the following supplemental budget request: appropriating sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars from District One Blight Funds to support exterior lighting for the Tindall Fields Affordable Housing Development Project; appropriating ten thousand dollars from the general fund balance to the G-Caps budget; appropriating eighty thousand from the 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds for engineering and design costs for a new bike trail in Arrowhead Park; appropriating unallocated 2012 SPOSS city and county funds for engineering, design, and construction of a sound barrier at animal welfare. And the committee approved the Eleventh Amendment to the 2018 SPOSS timeline and budget. The committee also approved a plan to evaluate cost-saving measures within the Solid Waste Division. This concludes the report of the Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Watkins. Jeff. Excellent. Next, Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on February 27, 2018. We took the following action. The committee approved a resolution in support of establishing an internship program with Wesleyan College. I believe that resolution was sponsored by former mayor Pro Tim Bivens. This concludes our report, but we do want to mention that this committee will be meeting next Tuesday. We have a number of items on the agenda. We will have updates from Convention and Visitors Bureau, from the Land Bank Authority, and an update on recreation from Parks and Rec. So, and we will be meeting in this room, since we anticipate having a number of people in attendance at that committee meeting. So this concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Next, Public Safety, but I understand no report. Thank you, Chairman Shepard. And then Facilities and Engineering, that report will also be given to us by Chairman Watkins.
Thank you, sir. The Facilities and Engineering Committee met on February 27, 2018. The committee approved a plan for implementation of an adopt-a-park program. This completes the report of the Facilities and Engineering Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, and the Consent Agenda is for an alcoholic beverage license application. This is submitted by Jason Glenn Frost, his agent for MM Macon LLC, doing business as The Mellow Mushroom at 5425 Bowman Road. As I understand it, that restaurant has been in existence, but this is a change of ownership of the business. And the application then is for liquor and mixed drinks, beer, and draft beer, and wine, all to be consumed on the premises at that location. The application is accompanied by the sheriff's certificate of a satisfactory criminal background check on the applicant, the business development services affirmation that appropriate fees have been paid, zoning compliance certificate is here from P&amp;Z, as well as a distance measurement form from the county engineer to say that it meets all the required distances from other structures, other prohibited structures, and the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph. The committee, the whole, reviewed this and recommends that the license be issued as requested. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of the license signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and that license will be issued as requested. Next, we'll go to Old Business. And the first item of Old Business is the acceptance of the grant for the bike rack, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a bike rack and repair station as a donation to Macon-Bibb County from Bike Walk Macon as paid for and received through the Knight Foundation grant and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next, Item B is to accept a grant for spay and neuter services at Animal Control, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept a Community Foundation of Central Georgia Clayton and Carol Paul Fund Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for spay and neuter services at animal welfare and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is the Eleventh Amendment to the timeline for the 2018 SPOSS project list, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the Eleventh Amendment to the 2018 SPOSS project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOSS project manager and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Bivens, excuse me, Commissioner Bivens?
I'm not sure what these changes are, but most of them that have come up have to do with things that we hadn't talked about before some others. And so, because there are some things that we don't even talk about that we agreed on, and I'm going to vote against this, and still we start including things like the money that we all agreed on for blight projects, which never gets talked about.
Thank you. My approach, I did it again. I'm sorry. Old habits are hard to break. Old habits are hard to break. Thank you, Commissioner Bivens. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. One no, Commissioner Bivens, but the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next, Item D is an ordinance about shifting some District One Blight Bond Funds to the Tindall Housing Fields Affordable Housing Project for streetlights, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to appropriate sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars of District One Blight Bond Funds for the installation of twenty-nine exterior LED lighting fixtures in support of the Tindall Fields Affordable Housing Development Project and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next, Item E is an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds for our G-Caps program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Commission of Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, to appropriate ten thousand dollars from general fund balance to G-Caps budget to pay for activities remaining throughout FY 2018 as supplemental number six and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, I'm happy to vote to support this, because I've seen the work that Assistant County Manager Coney, Commissioner Bivens, and others who work with this project, that they've devoted to it. I was so impressed at the Georgia Municipal Association Conference in Atlanta last month, when one of our students was selected to lead a session of adult elected officials, and talked about the G-Caps program. And to see a room full of people listening to this young man, Mr. Patel, was just, it was just wonderful, and it made you feel so good about Macon's young people and the prospects for the future. So I wholeheartedly endorse this, and thank the folks who've worked with this, because this is truly building for our future.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to provide for funding for some design work for a mountain bike trail out at Lake Tobasofki, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of up to eighty thousand dollars from the 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds to provide funding for engineering and design costs associated with the construction of a bicycle trail in Arrowhead Park at Lake Tobasofki and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds for animal, for animal welfare and a sound barrier at the Animal Control Facility on Fulton Mill Road, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to include remaining unallocated 2012 SPOSS city and county funds for animal welfare in the fiscal year of 2018 budget for the purpose of engineering, design, and construction of a sound barrier at animal welfare as indicated in the heretofore attached Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, refresh my memory, this is, RFPs have already been sent out and approved, or, and we're ready to start construction, or, refresh my memory on that. Maybe Julie's here and can tell us.
My recollection is that they have done the engineering and design, and came up with a price tag of, I'm thinking, eighty?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty, eighty-seven thousand dollars, but they got that from using the remaining funds from 2012 SPOSS that were left over there, and some additional 2018 funds. So I think they're ready to start construction in the near future.
That's what I thought, and I want to commend Commissioner Allen for working with the citizens, and really the whole commission for listening to these people, because they had a very valid complaint. And even though you're an animal lover, you don't like to hear dogs barking at night when you're trying to sleep. So I'm glad to see we responded as quickly as we did, and probably should have been sooner, but once they really brought it to our attention, we responded in a quick fashion. So that speaks well for we listen to the people. I yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is there further discussion? Mr. Allen?
I think when the lady brought the dog sounds down here, we listened to the dogs at three o'clock in the morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. And next is Item H, an ordinance approving and authorizing a list of 2018 projects on the timeline for funding. This is an ordinance to appropriate funds for that, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of funds for a list of calendar year 2018 projects, with said projects being subject to the procurement process and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. One no, Commissioner Bivens, the ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Government to evaluate... Next is a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Government to evaluate and report back to the Commission regarding opportunities for cost-saving measures in the Solid Waste Department. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission directing the Macon Bibb County Government to evaluate and report back to the Commission regarding opportunities for cost-saving measures by either terminating the county's contract for private solid waste services or otherwise eliminating some or all functions of the county's solid waste department and contracting with outside vendors to perform those functions and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. One, no, Commissioner Bibbins. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item J, which is an adopt a park resolution. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the Macon Bibb County Parks and Beautification Department to implement and adopt a park program and to set terms and policies therefor and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item K, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for street repairs. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Savari Enterprises for four-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and eighty cents to be paid seventy percent from L-Meg funds and thirty percent from 2018 SPOS funds for the purpose of repairing street concrete on Ophersyth Road, Park Street, Anthony Road, Status Law Circle, and Hillendale Circle, and to repair three brick crosswalks at the intersection of MLK Junior Boulevard and Cherry Street and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Yes. In looking at this list, a large number of these streets are located in the downtown area. Well, some of them are. And you will recall that in one of our meetings, I asked that we develop a, something that we could see where all of the work has been done on the streets, let's say in the last year or so, so that we can show people that there is a fair distribution of the work. And so I just want us to be mindful of that because looking at this list, you'd think that there are just certain areas where all of this work is being done. And I want to be convinced that we're doing a good job of spreading this out because there are people in our neighborhoods who are complaining that their streets, there's some streets that have been resurfaced two or three times and the brick has been repaired in the downtown area two or three times. And their street hadn't been paved ever. And, you know, they've got really rough streets that they're riding on. So I just want to be comfortable in making these decisions and approving this kind of stuff. And if we are not doing the right thing by all sections of the community, then that will let us know that we need to do about a job.
And if I recall correctly, the county engineer, Dave Fortson, was present at that meeting and indicated he could do that. So we'll follow up with him and try to have that ready for the next committee meetings. Is there further discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to appoint a new county manager. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to appoint Dr. Keith Moffett as county manager and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Dr. Moffett, congratulations. Welcome as our new county manager. Would you stand up so we can recognize you, sir? Be at work tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. That's very good. I'm delighted. Next is a resolution to settle a case arising out of a car accident. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing settlement in the total amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for any and all claims, demands, or damages against Macon Bibb County arising out of or connected in any way to McCollum Holling, Preston McCollum versus William Trey Sheffield, Macon Bibb County, Macon Public Works, Civil Action Number Sixteen, CV six-four-two-one-nine, pending in the Superior Court of Bibb County, State of Georgia, and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a settlement of a minor's claim from a different automobile accident case. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing settlement in the total amount of three thousand dollars for any and all claims, demands, or damages against Macon Bibb County arising out of or connected in any way to Antrazius Martin individually and as next best friend of Chase Martin, a minor versus Macon Bibb County, Georgia, Civil Action Number One-seven-eight-eight-seven-eight, pending in the Civil Court of Bibb County, State of Georgia, and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve and endorse a loan from the revolving loan fund at the Urban Development Authority for the Tyndale Fields Project Phase Four. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve an Urban Development Authority Loan in the amount of one million, four hundred thousand dollars to be made to Tyndale Partners for LP and in support of low-income housing tax credits to develop the Tyndale Fields Three property located at nine-eight-five Plant Street in Macon Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
The Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, item P is a resolution to call a special election. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission ordering a special election to fill the balance of the unexpired term of office for District One Commissioner Gary Bechtel and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Schlesinger?
Mayor, it's a little bit lonely right now on this end of the horseshoe. I just want to thank Commissioner Bechtel for his service to the school board, to Bibb County, and to Macon Bibb County. And I wish him the best of luck as he now moves forward in the political world. I think it's a loss to us, but it's going to be a gain to others as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Mayor Protem Tillman?
Just want to share those same sentiments as Commissioner Schlesinger has shared. We appreciate Commissioner Bechtel's service, but I do want to encourage this commission to be on the phone tomorrow talking to whoever as far as our local delegation and our other Board of Election members because if we are not able to get them to approve this and be on the ballot by May twenty-second, it's going to take us all the way to November, and we'll be without another commissioner. And so hopefully we can get this law changed and approved and go forward and so we can at least get another commissioner by May twenty-second. So we all should be advocating for this. And so with that, good luck, Commissioner Bechtel.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tillman. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, item Q is a settlement of the adults' claim in the same car wreck that we just approved the minors' claim for. I'm going to ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing settlement in the total amount of eight thousand dollars for any and all claims, demands, or damages against Macon Bibb County arising out of or connected in any way to Antray Nisha Martin versus Macon Bibb County, Georgia, Civil Action Number One-seven-eight-eight-seven-nine, pending in the Civil Court of Bibb County, State of Georgia, and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, we have a resolution to allow the sale of alcohol by the Cherry Blossom Festival on certain streets in the downtown area during cherry blossom. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the Macon, Georgia Cherry Blossom Festival to hold its thirty-sixth annual Macon, Georgia International Cherry Blossom Festival in downtown Macon during certain dates and times in March of 2018 to permit the lawful sale and service of alcoholic beverages at various festival events, to permit festival attendees to purchase and consume alcoholic beverages in the designated streets of downtown Macon during the various festival events, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item S is a resolution in support of establishing an internship program with Wesleyan College. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission in support of establishing an internship program with Wesleyan College and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Commissioner Bibbins, I understand that that was your initiative that led to that. And I hope it's successful in that we are able to set up a good internship with Wesleyan. Thank you very much for your efforts in that regard, sir. That's right. Okay. There was one other item that was listed on the agenda as old business for the Committee of the whole, but a subsequent decision was made to refer that to new business. And I'll ask the, well, have you got it right there? The triple point? No, no. No, no. We can just say that we're going to refer it to committee for further study and evaluation. Other items of new business that have come down thus far that are going to be referred to committee, first is a resolution of Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a summer 2017 Georgia County Internship Program Grant in the total amount of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia Civic Affairs Foundation that have been awarded to Macon Bibb County Attorney's Office to fund one internship for the 2018 summer term and for other lawful, I'm going to refer that to the ordinance. Appropri, Operations and Finance, you know, Operations and Finance Committee. Next is a, next is a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of two summer 2017 Georgia County Internship Program Grants, total amount of four-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-six dollars from the ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation that have been awarded to Macon Judicial Circuit Public Defender's Office to fund one internship for the 2018 summer term and for other lawful purposes. I'm going to refer that to Operations and Finance as well. The triple point program was for engineering services, and that also would be referred to Operations and Finance. That's all of the new business we have at this point. But I would urge everyone, if you're interested, to check your agenda that will be published on Friday afternoon and will let you know what additional items, ordinances, and resolutions that have come down and been referred to committees, which will begin meeting next Tuesday, what would that be, the thirteenth? Next Tuesday, the thirteenth, at nine o'clock a.m. in the conference room, although I think Chairman Lucas has indicated she'll hold her meeting in this room because of the crowd she expects to be here. But that's nine o'clock next Tuesday when the committees meet to begin to evaluate these and other ordinances and resolutions. That brings us now to the time in our agenda where we have public comments on non-agenda items. And there are several people that want to talk to us tonight about non-agenda items. The first is Bentley Hudgens. Bentley Hudgens wants to talk to us about March on Macon and comprehensive civil rights. Mr. Hudgens, are you? Yeah, you are. You are recognized for five minutes. Moffett, see you in the morning. Congratulations to you, Melinda. We're happy.
Thank you, Mayor Rickert. Good evening, commission, and good evening, everybody of Macon. So as many of you may know upon the commission, you've probably been a little familiar with me. My name is Andrew Bentley Hudgens. I am one of the lead organizers of a movement called March on Macon and Macon Unity. Last year, I was here asking my commissioners and my mayor to stand with me in solidarity for the rights of everyone, regardless of who they love, how they identify, where they're from, or the color of their skin. And the majority of you stood with me. And I'm asking you to do that again this Saturday and to the Macon community. This Saturday, we will be having March on Macon again. And we're going to start at 2:00 p.m. at Coleman Hill, go down to Rosa Park Square. And there will be several speakers from the ACLU of Georgia, from Georgia Equality, from Lambda Legal, the NAACP of Macon Bibb, as well as some local elected officials and myself. I just wanted to explain why I'm doing this. So last year, I was at a really low point in my life. I didn't have a lot going for me. I had just gotten back in school. I didn't have a job, and I didn't know what my future held. But now, in this time, I've graduated from Yarster University. I've been at the Capitol and in the City Hall of Atlanta, working for criminal justice reform, for reproductive justice, for voters' rights, for women's rights, for immigration and economic development of our state. I'm there temporarily because I still think Macon is my home. Although Atlanta is a beautiful city and it has a lot of opportunities, it doesn't have the wisdom of Samoni. It doesn't have the courage of William P. Daddy Bill Randall. It doesn't have the funk of Little Richard. It does not have the groove of the Allman Brothers, and it does not have the soul of Otis Redding. When I walk the streets of Atlanta, I miss that. When I walk the streets of Macon, I remember. And I want to invite everyone to come this Saturday to stand with me for comprehensive civil rights. We're asking for very three simple things. For private employment protections, for public accommodations, and for housing protections for everyone. And if you agree with me, and even if you don't, please come on Saturday. We would love to have you and stand in solidarity with us and with the Macon community. And two, my commissioners and to my mayor, I want to thank you for your leadership and for your service over the past year. What you do is invaluable and indispensable, and I'm so happy that you are the leaders of Macon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hudgens. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. I have four individuals that want to talk to us about the same subject out of the Fillmore Thomas Center and Phase Two on the front zone Hollingsworth Road. Alma Williams, Shirley Turner, and Angelique Scott, and Alma Cooper. Are you here? And I don't know in what order you want to come and whether you can collectively focus your discussion or whether you want to take your full five minutes each. But I just figured I would let you make that decision.
Well, I don't know whether I'll be able to talk five minutes, though. My name is Alma Williams. I reside at 3403 Hollingsworth Road. Been there from December the nineteenth, nineteen fifty- Been there from December the ninth, nineteen fifty-nine, uh, till nine. And it's a little piece of property between my house and my daughter's house. And I've been informed that they wanna put a, a street, a bridge, or something between there, and I fully, totally object because I have grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren. We need my yard and that little space so they can go back and forth to my house and to their grandmother's house. Mister, the girl told me when I first moved over there, that that little piece of land wasn't big enough to do anything much with. So, he give me permission to use it in my yard. I've had trees cut out of the, uh, at the yard, I've had great, uh, yard work done, and my son still do the, still do the yard work. And I don't want the bridge or street to come between my house and my daughter's house. So, uh, that's all I have to say about it.
Good, well, thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Uh, I'm sure we'll, we'll hear more about this, uh, in the future, uh, is this Ms. Turner?
Yes, I'm Shirley Turner.
Very good, Ms. Turner, go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioner and, uh, and Mr. Mayor. Uh, on last Monday, February the twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, at about three PM, I learned that, um, a street was going to be between my house, three thirty-four oh seven, and my mother's house, thirty-four oh three. Um, I have, um, I'm here to ask that there be no access street, uh, between thirty-four oh three and thirty-four oh seven Hollingsworth Road. December nine, nineteen fifty-nine, we moved into, uh, thirty-four oh three Hollingsworth Road for residency as a girl, and, and I was in the first grade. I played on that property, and we, and as I grew up, we maintained that property. The summer of nineteen seventy-nine, uh, I purchased the property at thirty-four oh seven Hollingsworth Road as an adult to live with my family, made improvements, bought, um, soil and grass, and used the property as, uh, you know, for family events, and, uh, grandchildren, nieces and nephews going back and forth to my house and my mother's house. Um, I had made several attempts to purchase the land, never could get anyone, uh, never could get anyone to, um, to, um, say we could use, I may say, to say anything about the per- purchase of the land. Ask Street Church of God in Christ owned the property at one time, and we, uh, got someone there to work with us, but the person died. So then, uh, that was null and void. Um, heard about, you know, the Fillmore Thomas Center, and when we went to that meeting, um, it was agreed with the Macon City Councilman, not, yeah, Macon City Councilman, before we merged, that it would not be an access street to thirty-four oh seven and thirty-four oh three Hollingsworth Road, that they would do whatever they had to do, but it would not be accessed, they would not put a street between the two properties. On Janu- on July seventeenth, twenty seventeen, I spoke to, uh, Tax Commissioner Wade McCord, McCord, trying to get some idea, trying to get someone to see if I could purchase the land again, and, um, I never heard anything back from him. He told me I could send an email, so I did that. October the eighteenth, I emailed him back because I hadn't heard anything. Around about, uh, October the nineteenth, I received a letter from, um, um, Mr. Cornet saying, stating that the property at this time would not be for sale, the city wanted it, so it would not be for sale. So, I, uh, contacted my, um, County Commissioner, which is Al Tillman, uh, around about October, and finally talked with him in December of twenty, uh, seventeen, and, um, he wasn't any help to me. Um, and last week, like I said, I finally discussed, um, with an engineer, and he told me that it had been discussed that we probably could use the property, but still no mention that they were gonna put a road through it, uh, through there. So I talked with, uh, another person, and they told me that the road was going to be put there, so I immediately called again Al Tillman, which I guess it kinda made him upset because he wasn't, you know, he demanded that to tell, for me to tell him who told me to call him, and so I didn't have any other recourse but to call, uh, Ms. Lucas, which, uh, she grew up in that community, and she know the property very well. So I talked to her as to what I need to do, because it was kinda upsetting, uh, to know that property, that it was gonna be a street there, and I'm thinking about safety, my mother's eighty-five years old, and we're all, we're both sen- senior citizens, I'm sixty, um, six, will be sixty-five in April, my husband's seventy, and so, uh, and, uh, was, he has medical conditions and stuff like that, so it was kinda, you know, heartbreaking to us. But, uh, I would ask that, that, that the property that you, that the commissioner stick with the original plan, not to put a street there as it was when the city, the city of Macon Councilman said that it wasn't gonna be one, and, um, I, you know, just think that it would be an unsafe measure, and that's what, you know, that's my whole concern, and plus we put a lot of infant, a lot of work into the property. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, we appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Uh, Angelique Scott?
I'm Alma Cooper, and this is Angelique.
Okay, and, and Ms. Cooper, Alma, Alma Cooper and Angelique Scott?
Yes, we're sisters, and we're just gonna speak together.
Oh, good, that'd be great.
My main concern is the safety. Uh, as my grandmother and my mother has already, already stated, the street that they are talking about building is between my mother and their house. My grandmother already has, um, to cross the road, like, which is Hollingsworth, to get to her mailbox, and it's already, um, a hazard, her, for her to go across the mail, to get her mail, for one. And I think it will also, it, I think it'll be another danger for you all to put a road there for us to be able to cross the street, to visit, or whatever changes that will ma- have to be made for them to be able, for us to be able to visit each other, as, as the, us just crossing over that property. Uh, I think about me, that property been there since I was a little girl, my children, and now I have grandchildren, and my nieces and nephews, they're all the same age, and they, they automatically know when they go to Granny's house, they go to Muddy's house. So we're thinking about the safety as a whole, so we're just asking you all to please think about it, and, uh, as my mother say, just stick to the regular plan, and for us not to, um, for you all not to put a road there.
And, um, just for me saying, the, basically the same thing, but I have two daughters, and to go back and forth, that's where they play. I mean, literally, one house is here, and the other house is where you all are sitting, and it's literally that much space in between the houses. And so to put a road there, basically stepping out your house, and then you got some cars or whoever going back and forth, it really is a safety hazard. We already have to deal with the people that walk, um, on the path behind, um, in the woods back there, going to Fillmore Park, and to deal with the noise that comes from Fillmore Park when people are out there, uh, having their barbecues or whatever, we hear all of that racket and everything like that, and we have to deal with all of that, and just, I live literally next door to my mother, so all of us is right there.
Yeah, we all live there together. So it's my mother, my grandmother, and then my sister. So it's just a family, you know, a family thing, and then, not to mention, just the neighborhood altogether. We all grew up in that neighborhood together, everybody is still there. So we're just asking you all, just please, you know, reconsider, um, to do that for us.
Thank you very much, appreciate you being here, uh, and appreciate your comments. Uh, next Cleopatra Simpson. Ms. Simpson wants to talk to us about children on school buses. Ms. Simpson, thank you for your patience and for waiting for us, you're recognized for five minutes.
Well, thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, and listening public television land. I'm here because it seem like it's getting to a point now where not only are our children not safe in the schools, they're not even safe getting to the schools. Now, um, I'm sure you've probably heard about the bus accident that happened when little Alana, uh, Haines was, uh, thrown through, through the window of the bus from the, what the report said. Uh, now, I started a petition called hashtag Belt Our Babies. Now, um, we got almost, uh, nine hundred and twenty-four signatures and stuff, but see, this is my concern. I reached out to Houston County, which is where the, the accident occurred, and asked them, could we set up a meeting, because like I said, I have over nine hundred people in petition, people on social media, and just as many people who don't think we should have seat belts. Now, when we're dealing with this amount of people, we need to talk. They said that they didn't, they wouldn't, weren't gonna meet and talk with us because then other people would wanna do the same thing, so this is my concern. You're telling me that you're so cavalier, you don't care enough about the safety of our children, that you're not gonna meet and discuss this now based on what may happen in the future? That's a concern for me. So this is what I'm asking. Everybody who agree with the seat belts or don't agree, anybody who got a concern, let's get with these, uh, city official, well, officials, not just the city. You can go to Facebook, Glowlight LLC, that's my organization, Glowlight LLC. I put the names, I put the telephone numbers, and the ones who have email, I have put them on there, and, and please ca- contact them and ask them, why don't you care about our babies? You're not, you see, and this is, that's a big concern, and like I say, whether you agree or you don't agree. If you don't agree that we need seat belts, let's discuss an alternative. What can be done other than seat belts? Okay, can we have something, are any engineers in the crowd? Put your brains to work. Could we have something that maybe, uh, engage? I had a car, a Honda Civic, every time I hit the brakes, the seat belt automatically pulled me up, so I wouldn't go through the windshield, I guess, in case I flipped over. So, what happened is, it just pulled me back. Can we do that on the seat belt? And once I released the brakes, the seat belt relaxed. So that's my concern, and let, let me see, I got several things, I, I script myself because, you know, I, I go off path here. Um, okay. Oh, and here, and this is another thing, we want this to get to a point where we're gonna just start being concerned about the safety of the children, period and stuff. The school system, we need, now, I have a legal, I have a paralegal, I have a lot of people we're working together, we need to organize, it's, it's, it's bigger than me now. I need attorneys to come aboard so we can make sure that we're legal, with understanding that may come a time we have to step over the line. We wanna maintain and be cool, but we gotta understand in any movement, it may come a time when we have to bring more heat than hell. So this is what I'm asking. Go to Glowlight, Facebook Glowlight LLC, and ask these Houston County officials, why are you so cavalier about the life of our children, young people? Hashtag Belt Our Babies, make that, um...
Ms. Simpson, your ti- your time has expired, thank you.
That's five minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
You sure you didn't have that clock on fast forward?
Yeah, yeah, ma'am, thank you very much, though, for your comments and bringing this to our attention, I, I, I appreciate it. Uh, Chet Novak. Mr. Novak wants a housing blight in Macon, Mr. Novak, Chet Novak? All right, uh, Wade Horton, Mr. Horton, I think you wanna talk to us about the Transit Authority? Good evening, sir, you're recognized for five minutes.
Okay, good evening. Um, just, hopefully it's gonna be brief today. I wanted to, uh, talk about something that I talked about a little bit last time, but not a whole lot, and that is, uh, I'm still trying to figure out and find out information about the Macon Transit Authority's Executive Board. I have been asking and haven't found any, any answers, and I'm coming to you guys, hoping that maybe somebody on this, uh, commission may have an idea what the board is, who serves on it, and what are their, uh, what is their mission, what do they do, what decisions do they make? I've been attending several, well, every, every board meeting they have had. What made me want, uh, initially wonder about this board is, one day, the chairman at the time, uh, Chairman Craig Ross, and I can't remember what it was he said, but he came into the meeting, and he said that the Executive Board recommends that this board approves something, which would indicate to me that the Executive Board really didn't have, uh, power to actually enact something, but they could make recommendations. But then I read in the paper, uh, fast forward, that, uh, we have a new CEO, which is Mr. Ross, and that he was appointed by this Executive Board. Now, I've attended all the meetings, and I didn't see where the Executive Board recommended, uh, approval of this position, but nonetheless, it happened without that board's approval. So, this is lead to me to wonder, who is this board? Who serves on the board? What are their responsibilities? Because I've never seen anyone on it. I never go to the meetings, you don't, you don't hear much about the board except for when they do stuff like this, which leads you to think that there's just some hanky panky going on, and I'm just still trying to figure out who serves on this board. If there's anybody in this building, I asked the question last night, I didn't get answered, so I don't believe anybody in this building knows, but who serves on the Macon Transit Authority's Executive Board who can appoint without any other approval? I've been pondering this and asking and going here and there trying to figure it out, but no one can tell me, and it's just a simple question, who serves on the Executive Board of the Macon Transit Authority who has the power to hire a CEO? Now, if anybody has that answer, I will ye my time to them so that they can present me with that answer, because I have no idea, I don't even know how many people serves on this board. Is there a quorum? Their minimum they have to have to meet? I don't know, but I know they make important decisions, and they're covered because we don't know who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, we appreciate your patience, waiting for us, thank you for your comments. Um, Louis Hargrove, Mr. Hargrove, are you, there, y'all? Mr. Hargrove wanted to talk to us about taxpayers' money. We appreciate your patience, sir, you're recognized for five minutes.
I oughta say, Mayor, County Commissioners, uh, Mr. Holden, you should get with the, uh, clerk of the county, they should have all kind of records, uh, who own different boards. Um, I like says right here, all the violent we have out there, I always like, when I come down here, I don't come that much no more. I like to have a moment of silence. Will y'all please give me a moment of silence? Thank you. Our children always want our high priority, should be. G cap, do a good job, but you can go to juvenile just a detention home, pull a ton of them, youth out of there, and help them, advocate for them, they can be just as good at these G cap, if we would do it. Pastors, County Commission, State Representative, Congress, we need to get rid of a bunch of them Congress, they shouldn't go back up there and offer some more, we should get rid of them. We shouldn't vote for them no more, they don't do nothing, to be honest with you. I try to keep up with things. I'm not up, uh, on top of things or this, but I know them youth out there in our communities, they, uh, need jobs, and I remember a little bit from history, uh, they had a public work bill for people in the depression era back there, and they hired people to work in the road and streets. Maybe we need to have something like that for our youth, get them jobs some kind of way, maybe that would help them. I mean, it, it's a lot of good things going on in Macon Bibb County, but a lot of bad things too, and I try to keep up with things. We got a lot of good youth, I know that from the last three years, the type of work I've been doing, I run into a lot of them, and they amaze me how intelligent they are. You'd be surprised. I mean, some of them finished school, college, or whatever, but they come back and get a government job. You'd be surprised. So we don't have to be ashamed of our youth, we need to help them some kind of way, and I advocate for the poor economic disadvantage and whoever I feel like need help. And I advocate for the poor economic disadvantage, and whoever I feel like need help. But that ain't the reason I came down here today, Mayor. I come down here and talk all day long to you, if you have time. I got the time. But I came down here because I talked to, uh, one of your in-house representatives about this, uh, cable, channel fourteen. Lot of older people ain't able to come down here, get out in the rain and come here like I am. And, uh, it used to come on. Used to show it on television, channel fourteen. When we had City Councilor, uh, people had to pay to get that station. People raised sand back then, get count, count cable fourteen. And people had to pay to get that cable, 'cause they wanted to hear, know what was going on within their communities, and what our comm- Commissioners, which was council at the time, was doing for the peoples. And, uh, last time we, I heard, first and the third lie was February the sixth. I believe that was on Tuesday. I'm capable of making mistakes, but I believe that's what it was. And I talked to one of your in-house representatives. He said it all apart. I thought it was a money problem. But he said it wasn't a money problem. And I called him a cou- couple of times, let him know that it ain't been, y'all haven't been showing it to us, taxpayer. That's where the taxpayer came in there, Mayor. And I'm gonna keep up with it, but I'll let the public know what's going on. I mean, they can come down here and find out a little bit, not much. But put it out there on their screen. You'd be surprised who watching you, me, you all, when you're sitting up there.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrove. We, we appreciate your patience and appreciate you being here.
And thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh, next, Antonio Williams wants to talk to us about the Pleasant Hill Community Event. Mr. Williams, you, you're recognized for five minutes, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, yes. Uh, my name is Antonio Williams. I have my son, Asar, here with me. I am here on the behalf of the residents of the Pleasant Hill Community. I am here in reference to an annual event we have each year. This year marking the twelfth year. It's a Pleasant Hill Neighborhood Reunion. It's a community building event, uh, geared towards, um, pretty much restoration, uh, in our community, and trying to revitalize, um, not only the structures in our community, but the spirit, uh, of our community. Um, this event was founded by, uh, Mr. Amir Hassan, uh, the founder of the Weed Care Group. Uh, he has since fell ill, and we have, um, sought fit to continue, uh, not only this event, but the, uh, vision that he had when he, uh, initiated this event. Um, we would just, we were here to ask the commission to waive a, uh, park fee, because we host this event at Mattel Hubba Jones, uh, Park. And, uh, through Parks and Rec, uh, they charge us a hundred dollar reg-, uh, park fee for ho- for hosting this event there. Uh, we are here to petition the committee, the commission, I'm sorry, to waive that fee, uh, considering the, uh, objective of our event, uh, which falls directly in alignment, I think, with the vision of the city and the county, uh, for unity, uh, peace amongst residents, and, uh, uh, overall, uh, progress. Um, we just ask the commission to, in other words, like, help us to help you guys. Uh, this event, um, it does a lot of benefit for our community. It, it, uh, it's bridging that generational gap between our youth and our elders, you know, and, uh, it's allowing people to reconnect who have moved away from the community, and, and they look forward to this event to come back and restore old bonds. Uh, some people may need it to, um, to heal, to mend of old broken fences. And, uh, we just ask, um, the powers that be to, uh, assist us in that, and, um, and waive that fee, if possible. That'll be a big help to, uh, what we're trying to do moving forward as a community, and, uh, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for the information about the event. And, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll look into it, but rather than waiving the fee, perhaps we can find a benefactor who in, in honor and memory of Amir Hassan. I shouldn't say memory, in honor of Amir Hassan and what he's done over there to kind of inspire the Pleasant Hill community. Perhaps we can come up with the money to pay the fee for you. How about that?
That sure will work.
That, that work?
Uh, but, uh, moving forward, we, this is an event that we plan on continuing. And if we could get some type of grandfather, uh, solution to that, because, uh, like I said, it'll be a big help to, you know, to curb the expenses that we have trying to, you know, carry out this event.
Thank you very much for being here and for telling us about it. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
And, and fin- finally, whoops. Yeah, fi- finally, uh, uh, Mr. Richardson hadn't been here with us for a long time and wants to share some of his grassroots reflections. Ms. Richardson, we're delighted to see you again and see you up and about, sir. Uh, you're recognized for five minutes. Have some of your reflections with us.
Most worshipful mayor. I have personally come down here sincerely, uh, to offer my sincere gratitude. When I was in Navisont Health for two months, uh, I almost passed away, and I had received word that you had made some inquiries into my well-being. And I'll let you know that those prayers that I receive, which are emanations, raise me up through my seven-point chakra, to those of you who know what I'm talking about, to the point it raised me out of that bed to the point where I am now. I'll tell you a little something. I am a choir master and organist, uh, of a church in an Anglo-tradition. I've been playing practically all my life. We deal with psychic vibrations. We have a third eye. The sound of the voice opens up into that angelic kingdom, and we are able to see in that invisible empire. And I can truly say that the year that I've been laying on my back and using my mind, I really see a lot of things now, particularly in that, uh, Anglo-American tradition. And particularly what comes to mind is, uh, the skull and crossbones fraternity at Yale and the sister school at the University of Oxford at All Souls College. And I really now able to look beyond the veil of ices to see really how, uh, that power works. And, um, so when I come down here, um, the, the vibrations and the voices, uh, we actually can see that invisible empire. So I guess I'm saying through my years that I've been coming down here and doing my research, uh, has really paid off. So, um, I can see a lot of the, the workings before it, uh, fleshes out, so to speak. But in any case, um, I wanted to thank you very, very much. Uh, 'cause there are a lot of people who thought that I was gonna pass away, but, uh, those emanations and that third eye, and that great architect in the sky, you know. You know, the spirit is the spirit, um, you know. And again, thank you. Thank you very much, you know. And I'm still growing in grace. Yes, yes.
Good, good for you. Good for you. We're, we're delighted to see you up and about. Uh, thank you for being here with us and, and for sharing, for sharing that with us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And good health to you. Take care of yourself.
I will.
Good. Uh, there are no, uh, other people signed up to talk to us about a non-agenda item. It is upon a personal, personal privilege, Commissioner Schlesinger.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, send congratulations to the Mercy University Women's Basketball Team, which is a pretty, uh, amazing, uh, group of, uh, young ladies. They, uh, only lost two games this year. That was, uh, you know, back in the, uh, fall. They were undefeated in, uh, Southern Conference, um, play. Uh, Ms. Ross and I were in Asheville, uh, this past weekend for the SoCon tournament, which they just, uh, swept. And as a result, they're going on to the NCAA, uh, show. And, uh, I would just, uh, tell you that this is a, uh, they're ranked, uh, last I saw, it was twenty-fifth in the nation, which is pretty amazing for, uh, for Mercer University. So, uh, I just encourage the community to, uh, follow them. They'll know next Monday evening who they're gonna play in the tournament and where they're gonna play. And it's, uh, uh, something that we should, should all, you know, rally around and, and encourage them, because, as I said, this is a pretty special and talented group of, uh, young ladies that's representing us all.
Excellent point. Well, well made, Commissioner Schlesinger. Uh, no other points of personal privilege. We've reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Without objection, then, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.